We have a roll call, please.
Mayor Roland Dykes.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mike Prophet.
Here.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Here.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Here.
Alderwoman Luanna Odinger.
Here.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator James Fincham.
Here.
Thank you. We will now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting from regular session of January 14th.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of January 14th.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the board to accept those minutes as presented. It's been properly seconded. Will approved by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And all opposed. We'll also need a motion to approve the special call meeting minutes from January 23rd.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion on the board to approve that special call meeting minutes of January 23rd. It's been properly seconded. Are there any questions to the motion? If not, will approved by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And all opposed. Hearing none, motion carries. There are no proclamations or recognition of citizens by the mayor at this time that I know of. Does anyone have anything to add? Okay. Communications from the city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. I only have one thing on the agenda, but it's a pretty big issue. As each of you know, Fire Chief Randy Reagan will be retiring at the beginning of April. He's had a long and successful dedicating career with the city of Newport. We hate to see him leave, but respect his decision to do so and enjoy time with his family. But as such, I need some guidance from you all on how you want to move forward in the selection process to find his successor. Right now, we have the position posted and the deadline to put in a resume for a member of the fire service. It's Friday at 4:00 P.M. Randy will be leaving the first of April, so we will need to fill this position at the next meeting in March. We'd like for someone to spend some, whoever that you all choose. I feel it's important, Randy and I met today and talked about it. We feel it's important that they spend a little time with him before he leaves, that we just don't wait till he's out the door and set somebody down in the chair. I think there needs to be a little bit of a transition period as much as we can. So, I would just like to know how you guys want to proceed once we have those resumes. Now, there are basically three options to choose from. One, I've already instructed H.R. that once those resumes are collected on Friday to make copies for each of you. And we will get those to you, to where you can study those and evaluate them. Now, you can, your first option is to study those resumes, to come to your own conclusions, come back and march and make the appointment. Your other option is to have those candidates come in either at a call meeting prior to that meeting on the second Tuesday of March, or at the regular meeting, and each of them get up and give you a presentation similar to what we did when Mr. Gribble passed away, and put their ideas out there and be open to questioning from you guys. And then you can come to your conclusion after that. Your third option is to allow the mayor to assign or create a committee, an evaluation committee, and let that, now only one alderman can be on that committee, because you can't have two, because it has to be, anything with two has to be done in an open meeting, two or more. But one alderman can serve on it. But anyway, and let that committee do an evaluation process comprising of interviews and so on, and then make a recommendation back. Those are basically your options. And it's up to you on which direction you want to go. But I need to know which direction you want to go, so I don't know how to move forward once the deadline has passed on Friday.
I like the second recommendation is interviews and gives everybody an opportunity to speak, present themselves.
To come in here and do it at the regular meeting or at a call meeting.
I think a call meeting.
This is my opinion. Call meeting.
So, that would be probably, well, since the mayor, it'd be the mayor's call, but traditionally that would be March 3rd, Tuesday, March 3rd.
For a call meeting?
Yes.
Everybody take a look at the calendar and see if you're available.
That is Super Tuesday. Would that interfere?
Well, I think we could do it on Wednesday. That's just traditionally, that's what we do is on Tuesday. But, I mean, that's, that job's called. We could do it on Wednesday, or Thursday, or any day that week. But you'd need to be ready to make a decision on the following Tuesday.
I'm good with Wednesday the 4th.
I'm retired, I'm good.
Bobby, you okay? Coach.
How about Mike?
Mike.
He's a worker, isn't he?
Yeah.
March 3rd, Tuesday works best for me.
Sir?
March 3rd.
3rd?
Tuesday.
I mean, I just threw that out there, that it's a election day.
Did you do that?
Yeah. We'll be, this will be a voting precinct that day.
Polls will close when?
Wednesday the 4th.
At what time? At 8?
The minute the 2nd.
I could do Tuesday the 10th.
That's regular meeting?
That's regular meeting.
Can you do the Monday? I could go Monday, 2nd.
Monday the 2nd.
I'm ready.
Everybody ready? Okay.
Appreciate that.
Okay.
So, that Monday the 2nd?
5:30.
Yeah, 5:30.
It's y'all's time.
Well, 5:30. That's typical.
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, James. Reports from committees, members of the council, and other officers. Tanner Preservation Alliance.
There's more to the Tanner report, I think, later in the meeting, but so far we've made a, we had to call a couple of audibles on, we've not had to, we've chosen to for cost savings on some things with the building. So, it's pushback, well, it's not pushback the date of completion, because we had in several extra days, but this is going to sound weird, because we're working inside the building, but the rain has put back a project, because we have to dig, we have to dig the electric line, or the ditch for the electric line, and we can't do that right now because of all the rain. So, that has slowed that bit down. But we are not in danger of missing our.
Do you allow swimming pool then?
Pretty much, yeah. That's about the equivalent at this point. But for now, that's all I have on Tanner.
Anyone else have anything to add on Tanner building? Okay. No old business or unfinished business. We'll move on to new business. Item A, consideration of first reading ordinance number 20-01, budget amendment for the city of Newport.
This is our quarterly budget amendment that we do during the course of each year. In seventh quarter, if anybody has any questions about the line items on them.
And Mayor, I'll read the caption of that ordinance into the record. It's ordinance number 2020-01, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the city of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2019-2020.
Okay. We all have those in your book. What is the board's pleasure? Will entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
All right, we have a motion on the board to approve the ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program.
Roll call.
Okay. We'll do, we'll approve that by roll call.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Odinger.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Prophet.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item B is consideration of resolution 20-05, hiring administration services for T-DOT multimodal project.
The resolution you have in front of you is to hire community development partners for the administration services for the multimodal grant. That's the sidewalking project on Broadway and Cosby Highway. This is mostly, it is a middle of financial report and, not compensation, reimbursement request to the state, as well as the Bacon Davis wage interviews, which I hate and probably couldn't, I'd screw something up. So, we kind of need them. The cost of this is written into, I wrote that into the budget of the grant, so it doesn't cost us anything. And it's my recommendation to hire community development partners to serve that purpose for this grant.
Okay. You preferred the resolution. Entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the board to approve resolution for administrative services for the T-DOT multimodal grant. It's been properly seconded. Are there questions to the motion? Hearing none, will approved by the normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And all opposed. Hearing none, motion carries. Item C, consideration of resolution number 2020-06, hiring administration services for transportation alternatives project. Gary, you're still up.
See, everything I just said, except this is for the Riverwalk extension, and I like working with community development partners. They're one of the best there is in the state, or in the region, actually, and they're the only ones that submitted, so.
We've been working with them for a long time, and been very pleased with their service.
Is this a budgeted item?
Yeah, oh, yes, same thing. It's written into the budget of the contract, so it's not costing us a thing.
Okay. All right, you've heard the resolution. Will entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion on the board to approve consideration of resolution 20-06, hiring administration services for transportation alternatives project. It's been properly seconded. Are there questions to the motion? Hearing none, will approved by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And all opposed. Hearing none, motion carries. Item D, consideration of resolution number 2020-07, renaming River Street and River Road to Waters Edge Street.
I make a motion to make that change. I feel like that the Greggs have been committed to the project and their vision of what they want to see happen in their community. They've invested a lot of time and money in improvements and have had plenty of people show up to the meetings in support, and no one opposed. But I do want to go on record to say that changing the name of a street is not something that this council takes lightly. So, thank you for doing your due diligence and being committed to our community, but I do want to make the motion to change that name.
I'm going to second that, because, like you say, we've been to these meetings and nobody showed up against it, and like I say, they've worked hard on this, so I have to go along with it, Council.
Okay. We have a motion on the board to approve the resolution 2020-07, renaming River Street and River Road to Waters Edge Street. It has been properly seconded. We will approve by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
No.
We need a roll call.
Okay. Let's have a roll call.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
No.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
No.
Alderwoman Luanna Odinger.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Prophet.
No.
Thank you. What was that, was it count?
Two to three.
Two to three.
Motion fails.
Motion fails. All right. Item E, consideration of lease agreement between the city of Newport and Walter State Community College.
This is something that the community has been trying to accomplish for many years, and that is to have a Walter State campus present in the community. And over the years, a lot of different sites have been looked at, a lot of different ideas have been knocked around, from renovating churches to building, dedicating buildings and so forth. And so, there is space available in the Tanner building. About a quarter of the building that was un-dedicated for any one use, Walter State came and expressed an interest in it, looked at it, and they are wanting to lease the property and start classes in August to be in place in July, have everything up and running, and be ready to begin classes on August 1st. And I think this is a great step forward for our community. We're one of the few communities around that currently does not have a Walter State campus, and I think that it really gives us a step forward in having moved the entire economic fortune of the city and the county forward with having a campus here in the community.
And I'll echo what James has said, but I think, Lucas, you have something to add?
Yeah, I was just going to say, this is a tremendous opportunity. I want to invite Dr. Mixa and his team on three minutes a minute and say a few words. But this is obviously a pretty biblical milestone for us, not ever having a higher education facility in Cock County. From an economic development perspective, this is essential for us on the board. The new norm or standard is cradled to career, and that means from the time you're born until the time you go to work, we should have education and services to get you prepared for that. And that's been a critical step that we've not had, a service we haven't provided locally. And I just want to thank Walter State for giving us the opportunity to do that. Really excited that it happened here, and I'm glad everything kind of worked out so that we can be sitting here talking about this in the group. But Dr. Mixa, you want to come up and say a few words?
I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here first and to talk in front of you. We are very excited about this opportunity to come down. As was said earlier, we have been down here at least for the three and a half years that I've been at Walter State, and I know some people have been down before, looking at a variety of different spaces. This space at the Tanner building is perfect for an educational space. It is perfect for us to come in and be able to provide instruction for the communities here in Newport and in Cock County. And we are really looking forward to doing that and to serving you and your citizens in this area. So, thank you very much for this opportunity, and we look forward to being here.
Thanks, Walter State, for showing interest in our city too.
You're welcome.
County, county and city, but.
We were looking forward to, I know, especially with some of the changes that are coming up with some of the business and industry that we can help train employees right here in the city and really grow our presence, so.
Thank you, Dr. Mixa, and thank your team also for the hard work and the due diligence they put in. Most of you probably don't know, but this all happened pretty suddenly. We weren't, we weren't accustomed to having things happen this fast, but when it did, we were very pleased. So, thank you again, Dr. Mixa and your team. All right, we have a consideration of that lease agreement between the city of Newport and Walter State Community College. What is the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve the lease agreement. Second.
All right, we have a motion on the board to approve that lease, consideration of that lease agreement, and it's been properly seconded. Are there any questions? Hearing none, will approved by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And all opposed.
There will be a press release with all the details issued to you after the meeting, so I'll make sure to get that to you guys email.
All right. Item F, consideration of approving annual chamber events.
This is a thing we do annually when the chamber comes in in the spring, or late winter, early spring, and asks for permission to conduct their events for the coming year. Cause most of those, a lot of those have been inside the city, concerts, street festival, and those kinds of things, which they're here, we have any questions, but they're all, they're spelled out in the sheet.
Okay. Would anyone from the chamber like to respond, add anything?
I just want to say, thank you for having us, and we're so proud to normally partner with the city and downtown, and it helps so much for all the support that we get. And one of the other things is also the Christmas parade. And this year, I do want to say that the concerts, we'll be having five concerts, if you allow it. So, we're excited about that.
I'd like to add one other thing. I'd like to congratulate Ms. Lewansky for her dedication and her award. I'm not sure how to, what it was exactly, but I know it was very prestigious. Linda, would you, would you like to tell us what that award was? I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I think it's.
You have to, she's very modest. It was the Middle East Tennessee Tourism Council's Tourism Leader of the Year, and I was very honored, because it is in memory of Chuck Davis, who was a Newport resident, and he was also the tourism director for Cock County and then Morristown. So, I'm honored that they, I can be in those, those same shoes of his.
Well, congratulations there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item G.
Motion to approve this.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, we're moving a little bit too fast there. Yeah, we have, need a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion on the board to approve the consideration of approving annual chamber events. It has been properly seconded. Are there any questions to the motion? Hearing none, will approved by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And all opposed. Hearing none, motion carries. Item G is consideration of approving the intergovernmental agreement between the Cock County government, the city of Newport, and the industrial development board of the city of Newport and Cock County.
Lucas is here, if you have any real questions about it, he can explain, I'm sure, more definitely than I can. But basically, in the standard agreement that was drawn up of the industrial development board, the city of Newport was put into the contract with the new industrial park, which is not in the city, nor has the city put any funds into. And this is just removing the city's name from that contract, where the city has no obligation and has no benefit from it if anything happens, one way or the other. And so, it's, I think it's a valid point. It's the county's industrial park, the city has no hand in it, has put no funds into it, and so I think that, that's a valid point. The city's name should be removed from that.
Is that, is that what you understand?
That's the gist. Just, I guess for the record, the reason that we're having to do this is we decided for a joint effort, the ID, we have a joint IDB board, so that's the city of Newport and Cock County government. And the IDB's purpose is to, this is one of the, you know, many benefits of having an industrial development board, is being able to do these, a project like this, be able to hold those assets. But as the agreement for the IDB to hold title to that property by default, as the city of Newport being 50 percent with the county, if something were ever happened with the IDB and it'd be dissolved for whatever reason in 30 years from now, then it would be split, basically, whatever property, remaining assets would be split 20 to 20. So, what the county's asked is if that were to ever happen, and, you know, whatever, 50 years down the road, 30 years down the road, there were remaining assets, then those remaining assets would go to the county instead of the city. It really has no bearing on anything else from that standpoint.
Okay.
Now, I will say that when Bill Schultz first started approaching this, the city did generously offer to annex it. And for some reason, he was adamantly opposed.
Katie Manjus, why?
It's not like we didn't offer to him, but I say that in jest, but yes, I agree, but we need to remove the city's name off that.
Okay. Would anyone else have anything else to add? Okay. Then we'll entertain a motion to approve the consideration of approving the intergovernmental agreement between the Cock County government, the city of Newport, and the industrial development board of the city of Newport and Cock County, Tennessee.
Motion to approve. I'll second.
Okay. Have a motion on the board to approve. It's been properly seconded. Are there questions to the motion? Hearing none, will approved by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And all opposed. Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. Item H, considering, consideration of allowing a city of Newport employee to use accumulated early retirement time.
You all, I don't know if you all got the letter, but I have an employee who is about to have a surgical procedure. It's a necessity, he has no way of healing without it, and he is going to probably have about a six-month recuperation time. So, he is asked that we give him, I have the authority to grant him the second bucket, and then you all have to approve that, getting into that early retirement for him to be able to utilize that time in his recovery.
Upon the recommendation of the chief. And that would be my recommendation.
Okay. Okay, you've heard the consideration of allowing a city, of allowing a city of Newport employee to use accumulated early retirement time.
I'll make a motion to accept that early retirement time.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion on the board to approve consideration of allowing a city of Newport employee to use accumulated early retirement time on chief's recommendation. Are there any questions to the motion? Hearing none, will approved by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And all opposed. Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you, hon, I'm sure he truly will appreciate that as well.
There are no bids, purchases, or expenses.
I'm speaking, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if I can speak that.
Okay. That's the next item, is comments from citizens.
I come as a, I guess, a citizen and the chief of police. A couple of weekends ago, we had a roadblock situation where some of the participants were not 18, some were not wearing their vests, and that causes the calling tree to get activated, and I actually drove down and made observation and had the officers check them. So, we're working with the administrator's office, and Sarah, the checklist when they come in now will have an audit, or an initial mark beside each of those. You must be 18 to stand in the street, you must be wearing a vest, it must be approved, and the person who is requesting that must be present. So, we're going to do a check off on each of those now, and I just wanted you all to know that when we see those things, or someone calls us, we go immediately and address them, and we're going to try to use this to address that, and hopefully, they'll, once they initial each of those items, they'll remember that they made a commitment to keep everyone safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens wish to speak?
Council, thank you for hearing me. As time goes on, things change, so do government bodies. In reference to the name change, I spoke to MTA's Michelle Ashburn about how to properly address the situation in the future. Her recommendations was for us to recommend to city council to create a policy where citizens or businesses can do a road name change properly. So, that's what we need to do, stick by that policy, and go from that point. So, I would like to know if, if there's any interest on the board to do that. So, I would like to know if there's any interest on the board to do that, for future references.
Well, no, do we have a policy in place now? We do not. It never hurts to have a policy in place to address certain, each situation. By our city administrator, just said that we don't have that policy right now, but we could get in touch with MTA's, and they could suggest what a proper policy might look like, and we'll try to get that in place.
That's Melissa Ashburn is who I spoke to, and she said, that's, she's the one who gave me that advice, that it would stop seven meetings.
I know Melissa. I do know her, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from citizens?
Looks like it's just me, clear? James said, I'm retiring. Yes, I am retiring, nothing's wrong. It's just the right thing to do, and now's the time. It's my 30 years are behind me recently, and it's, like I said, I've told some people, it's like Peyton, you know, who won the Super Bowl and he got to go. Well, I get to work with some of the best people in this whole county, not just those firefighters, these people here, the police officers, everybody, even Ben. You know, it's all been good. And so, like I said, I get to go out when, you know, those guys, I've told people before, all those people, those other 25 people do the work, and they put my pictures in there. So, you know, it can't get any better than that. So, I really appreciate it, I appreciate what the town's done for me, and that's enough about me right now. We hired a new person last meeting, and he'll be starting school next Monday, and he wasn't able to be here last meeting, because he was, I guess, taking his last trip before he went to work. But anyway, Seth Griffin is here tonight, so I can introduce you to who you hired, and thank you for hiring him.
Have him come up and let us take a look at him.
He'll be, he'll be starting recruit school next Monday, and so...
Just wanted to thank you for the opportunity. Been trying to and wanting to for a very long time, come work for the city, and it's a great privilege, and I thank everyone again for allowing me to do that.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
He graduated late. And everybody's aware that Mark retired after 40 years, and so, our new assistant fire chief is Ed Burton. He's holding the pillar down back there, but so you know who to look for. There they are, that's all I got to say. Like I said, it's, it's been, it's the best job in the world. It's just time. I have to play with my grandbaby.
Thanks for the job you've done, Randy, till here. Thanks for working.
Thank you, Randy. Any other comments from citizens? Okay, hearing none, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I can make a motion.
It's been properly seconded, we are adjourned.